This is the time that was noticed and posted for our regular board meeting. It's Tuesday, August the 13th. It's 10 o'clock a.m. and we're in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, Melody Lane, Bisbee. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.02H, the public did have access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. And if you would stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting, and the Board may vote to recess into an executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the Board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. We begin with the roll call. District 1?
Crossbeats here.
District 2 Supervisor English is present. District 3?
Supervisor Judd is here.
We have a complete board this morning. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams, computer, or mobile app, or by phone by calling 602-609-7513, or 888-680-6714, conference ID 865-306-0555. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. The Board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda, but to speak on the agenda item or during the call to the public, you need to complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the Board by 9 o'clock a.m. on the day of the meeting. You note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published, and this means that some presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. We begin with the call to the public, and it seems as though I only have one. Trish Jaredette is on Teams. Are you there, Ms. Jaredette?
I am. Thank you very much.
Yes, go ahead.
Good morning. Trish Jaredette in Sierra Vista. I want to express my happiness that the meeting last Friday went smoothly and quickly. And I think I understand that the reasons for concern two years ago, which were not of concern for the primary, will also carry forward to the general election in November. So if I understand correctly, I hope that means that the November canvas of the election results will go as smoothly as it did last Friday, regardless of who wins or loses, and regardless of problems that might exist in any other county in Arizona. So I look forward to that happening smoothly, and I appreciate that it went well this last time. Also, I want to say that I did both observing on the day of the primary, and I also then was lucky enough to participate in hand count verification, both of which were very interesting processes. And again, I urge people to investigate signing up, volunteering, in some cases even getting paid, but volunteering to participate in that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to the consent agenda, and I have items 1 through 9. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 9.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. No conversation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. So we move on to the public hearings, and the first one is Resolution 2417. Could I have a motion while Susan Bronson is getting ready to explain it to us?
Madam Chair, I move we adopt Resolution 24-17 that selects owner occupied housing repair as the project for which Cochise County will seek community development block grant state special margin grant funds.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. We need to move into a public hearing. Is Susan on the line? Are you here to talk for Susan, or is it?
No, she said she was coming down. I just saw her a minute ago, and she said she was coming down, so.
Okay, let's wait just a second and see if Susan shows up. We need to have the information on the record. Or play music or something.
I was thinking music.
Her embarrassment from showing up probably will be the only thing that's necessary to let this ever happen again. Or she may be too embarrassed to show up. We'll soon find out. Just shows we have humans that work over in community development, I guess. We saved a place for you so you can tell us about the owner occupied housing repair, ready?
I apologize. I thought there were a lot of items ahead, so my sincere apologies.
There were a lot of items, but we got rid of them right.
You're efficient. I know you have a really busy day today, too. All right. So the Arizona Department of Housing has an opportunity.
Can all of you hear what she's saying? She's sitting away from the speaker, and I thought maybe it might not come through to the audience. I could read her lips. Go ahead, Susan.
Okay. The Arizona Department of Housing has an opportunity. It's entitled State Special Project. It's also a CDBG grant. It's a competitive grant, and it's offered once every two years. So the county does have the opportunity to apply for that, so we wanted to tell you about it today. It has the same criteria as the other CDBG grants, so that would be it must benefit low to moderate income people, it needs to eliminate slum or blight, or it can be for an urgent community need. And then the type of projects that can be used are similar to the other CDBG projects. So it can be used for housing, it can be used for public facilities, it can be used for community facilities, and it can be used for planning documents for an upcoming CDBG project. So as you all know, we have been performing housing repair with our previous CDBG grant, and then we also obtained a state housing trust fund grant to continue that work. With the projects that are in the pipeline, after those are constructed, we will have used all of those funds. It's approximately $750,000 that we've gone through in a very short time because there's great need in the community. We wanted to tell you what we've been doing with those funds. So can you back up a couple of slides? So one of the first projects that we did was for a woman who had a water pipe that was broken behind her wall. So she had to turn off her water because the water was coming in, damaging her flooring, damaging the wall, damaging her bathroom. And she applied for a program after she had been hauling water for a few months, and she was a woman in her 70s. She was even washing her clothes out with water. She wasn't equipped. She wasn't living off the grid where she had a big tank or reservoir. She was just somehow bringing water in. And I mean, she's trying to flush toilets that way, she's trying to wash dishes that way. And when we came into the house, I don't know how you clean with that water, but the house was spotless. But one day she was just really exhausted, and she got teary, and she said, you know, I've been washing out clothes for hours, and she said, I'm just getting exhausted. So that's the type of work that the project does. The contractor came in, fixed the broken pipe, and then he did have to redo her bathroom because it was so water damaged. And then this is an example, the flooring that he put in for her because the flooring had been damaged as well. So that was one of our first projects. And then subsequently, we've done quite a few heat pumps which provide heating and cooling for people. That doesn't look like, you know, something that's very interesting, but if you don't have heat in the winter and if you don't have cooling in the summer, you really, really appreciate having that heat pump. We received a thank you note from a lady who said that that had improved her health, just having adequate cooling. And then, next slide, please. We've done a number of safety showers. These are for people who are fall risk. So we had a man who'd had a number of brain surgeries, and his equilibrium was off, and he needed a safety shower. And after he got a safety shower, he said, I just love this so much, I just want to live in here. Before he was, he called him sponge bath. He said, I'm afraid to even take a shower because I'm afraid I'm going to fall. And he had a part of his skull missing, so for him, if he fell, you know, that could be fatal for him. And then finally, this was a resident who hadn't had gutters on his house. So without gutters, the water goes straight down, and it damages the exterior of the housing. And so the exterior of this house was all damaged. She was getting water in through his windows, and then that causes additional damage. So the contractor repaired the exterior water damage and replaced the windows and installed gutters, and this resident said, I just feel like I have a new house. So we just wanted to let you know what the project can do. We held a public hearing for citizens just to gather input. This was not a VOC public hearing, but per ADOH, we're required to hold a hearing that isn't a city council or a board meeting, to just gather input on how the community would like to see state special projects funds be used, if you all agree that you would like to pursue that, and if that were to be the project that was selected. And it was suggested to continue the owner occupied housing rehab project. So we do have an opportunity to apply for this grant, and if you would like, we could suggest that the project be owner occupied housing rehab.
We are in the public hearing, but certainly Board members, if you have questions or comments now would be the time to bring them up.
Ms. Bronson, thank you very much for your diligence. I would hope that urgent community need would negate owner occupied, any chance of that. In other words, I want to make it other than owner occupied, as we talk about from time to time.
Oh, you would like to apply for something else instead of owner occupied housing rehab?
Well, some grant that is not dependent on owner occupied, and when you said urgent community need, I was hoping that an urgent community need would negate the requirement for owner occupied.
Let me ask also, we have owner occupied, but you also have to have an income criteria.
Yes.
It can't be for just anyone. So even if you moved it to, if it were a rental, whoever owns the rental would have to have been, you know, in the income. So I understand what you're saying, but I don't think there's any possibility of getting, because we haven't gotten this grant yet. And so if you wanted to open it up like that, I don't, I don't think the state housing would approve of that.
Okay, that's fine, as long as, you know, let's both try to find something that works that way, and that would be a wonderful thing. What I was talking about, Madam English, was squatters and a certain property that we've talked about that has become a problem for law enforcement and so on. So what can you tell us about a next meeting? You mentioned a next meeting for the community other than a Board of Supervisors and City Council meeting?
That was a previous meeting. That one has occurred.
Okay.
And then this is the second public hearing.
I see. Will those type of meetings that are for the community other than Board of Supervisors, will those reoccur?
No.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
You said?
I don't have any questions. I think it looks like it worked beautifully, and from what I know, it worked, it worked well. Thank you.
Well, it looks like there are a lot of things that you are doing now through the prior CDBG grant, and what you're asking us today is to allow you to apply, like, we don't have this money yet, but allowing you to apply with the same criteria that we used for the CDBG grant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Does anyone have any other question?
Nope.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing then, and give you the last opportunity if you want to add anything to the record. If not, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Hearing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved.
Item number 11.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt Resolution 24-18 that authorizes the Development Services Department to submit a community development block grant state specials project grant application to the Arizona Department of Housing to fund owner occupied housing repairs in Cochise County.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I'm going to move us into the public hearing. I have not had any request for anyone to speak on this, but as any public hearing, if there's someone available that wishes to speak, we'd give them the opportunity. Okay, it looks as though we have, in the prior one, agreed to the criteria. This one is asking us to agree to submitting the project for as a grant. Is that correct?
That is correct. The Arizona Department of Housing requires the Board to authorize the department to submit the grant application.
Okay. So any other questions or comments?
No.
No.
Hearing none, now I'll close the public hearing. We do have a motion and a second on the floor, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. We didn't give you any demerits for being here.
I sincerely apologize.
Okay, we move to the action items. The first one, item number 12, is something that I submitted and have for several years. There is a church in Sierra Vista that has taken on the project of helping Golden Acres for cleanup. And so I'm asking for a motion to approve this community development.
Madam Chair, I move we approve Community Enhancement Fund expenditure for District 2 Golden Acres Community Cleanup in the amount of $2,000.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, and I just want to add to that. So for the public's benefit, this has been very successful. It is cleaning up an area that most of the people are not wealthy. The housing in that area is older, and so it takes a lot more outside help in order to help these retirees and people who can't handle things. It gives them a chance to get rid of the old couch, and with the volunteers coming in, it helps them to keep their community clean and safe. So I appreciate your honoring the fact that we have volunteers that are willing to work, and so with what little community development funds that we have, it helps the community. So we do have a motion and a second. I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say.
Just a question.
Yes.
Very simple. What do we expect to get for $2,000? Because there is a similar church in Palominas that also wants to do the same thing. So I'm wondering, what can, what can I tell them is available for $2,000?
These, this group asked for one large roll-off and the fees in order to take it to the transfer station, and in addition, there are usually, now I put an amount of $2,000 on it for the total project because it's all through solid waste, but some of them take trucks in order to go through the community and pick up things. So it's for the dumping fees, if you want to call them that, and one dumpster, one large dumpster.
Okay.
For one project.
Did that include privately owned pickup trucks to go do this and the fuel for those privately picked up?
No fuel.
Incidental expenses?
No fuel. It's only for the fees for the transfer station.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions to come? If not, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you. Item number 13, if we could have a motion, and I think Ms. Judd wants to explain this one.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve a proclamation designating August 12 through 16, 2024 as Wilcox Little League 12-Up Softball Week. And we got a second.
Second. We have a second.
I need the proclamation. So as I've been reporting at the last three meetings, as things were approaching, and as the competition, I need the proclamation from way over there. As the competition was going on for our Wilcox softball girls, it was exciting for me, but excited for a community. We, I think a lot of good was done. I mean, they're little ambassadors now, and I was so encouraged by the people at the county that were following along and excited, and as I announced it, people in the audience were excited. Oh, I coached softball and wanted to give me the appreciation, and I certainly cannot take the appreciation. Each of those girls did more than I can imagine doing myself and even as a youth. And I just wanted to read this proclamation that we put together at the county to give you and make this official, our appreciation. Proclamation, Wilcox Little League 12 Youth Softball Week, whereas the Wilcox Little League 12 Youth Softball Team is composed of our local youth who embody the Wilcox cowgirl spirit of grit, spunk, determination, perseverance, beauty, and teamwork; and whereas the Wilcox Little League 12-Up Softball Team has represented our community with the utmost integrity and honor showcasing their skills and sportsmanship; and whereas the Wilcox Little League 12 Youth Softball Team has achieved a remarkable victory by winning the Arizona State Championship; and whereas the Little League 12 Youth Softball Team further demonstrated their excellence by winning the West Regional Championship, triumphing over teams from Hawaii, Nevada, and Northern California; and whereas the Wilcox Little League 12 Youth Softball Team proudly represented Wilcox, Cochise County, Arizona, and the Western United States at the World Series in North Carolina, having valiantly fought excellent international teams and a hurricane, bringing home one very exciting win mid-Atlantic and displaying courage and sportsmanship in defeat by very narrow margins to their World Series rivals, New England and Asia Pacific; whereas the Wilcox Little League 12 Youth Softball Team exemplifies the spirit of rural America's small-town athletes, proving that dedication, hard work, and talent are not confined to large cities but thrive equally in small communities; and whereas our Cochise County community is immensely proud of these young athletes and all they have accomplished, now therefore be it resolved that we, the Cochise County Board of Supervisors, do hereby declare August 12, 2024 through August 16, 2024, as Wilcox Little League Softball Girls Week in celebration of their outstanding achievements, approved and adopted this 13th day of August 2024, assigned by the Board. And there's a little bit of pomp and circumstance. We'd like to take pictures with people that have come to represent, and, but we do have some speakers that would like to speak, and let's take Patrick McCumber first. We did sign you up to speak at this time, and we've got a couple more, too, so possibly. Yes?
All right. Thank you very much, and I'm sorry, out of all of our teams, what we had, that I'm the one you get to see, but these girls have been gone for well over a month doing all this, traveling around and playing softball, so they needed to be in school today. So you get me. On behalf of the coaches and the girls, we really want to thank not just the people of Wilcox, but the people in Cochise County for all the support. It's been a great ride for this summer, but it was amplified by how much it meant to the community, how much support we received, phone calls, social media, news. But the community's been so excited about this event, and the girls, it made it that much more special for the girls. So like I said, on behalf of the coaching staff and the girls, we really want to thank all of Cochise County. It's not just Wilcox, it's all of Cochise County that we're, we're being supported by, also in Arizona. Arizona was just everybody, but Cochise County is fantastic, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
There were lots of people that were watching out for these girls.
Yes. People I haven't talked to in 10 years were, saw us on TV and gave me a call, so it was an easy summer.
Wonderful.
Unforgettable summer.
And the fact that they had, but we're not used to different weather here, and so they're stuck back there, and a hurricane comes, and they go, play with the hurricanes outside, so.
Hurricane.
They have all kinds of experiences.
Tornado warnings, airplanes, travel. It was just, it was a great summer for these girls, remember it the rest of their life, so.
I'm sure.
It was a really good summer.
Thank you.
And I want to thank the coaching staff, and I know you're one of those, but what I'm saying is, it is incredibly important that we honor those people who spend their time, effort, and energy helping these young people to take another step into adulthood with good mentorship. So teams are built, you know, they don't come to you. And so the coaches are responsible for that, so thank you for that, and if you would pass that on to the other people who were coaching.
I absolutely will. They're not just good softball players, they're great young ladies, so it makes it easier with that.
Thank you. And did you have something else you wish to speak?
There, well Nancy Jean would like, thank you, and we will, if you can help me a little bit, try to gather the girls maybe after school in a local place or even at the school. Sometime, if we could gather them and present this to them and have a copy and everything for them.
Okay.
Thank you. So Nancy Jean would like to say something, but don't leave yet, but then you can leave as soon as we've taken a picture.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Jean Welker. I live at 406 West Second Street in Bowie, Arizona. And good morning, Chairwoman, Supervisor Judd, and Crossbeats. I just wanted to step forward to thank you for your proclamation today. I think it shows your awareness and commitment to our citizens, no matter what their ages are. I work for Rio Soul, which is a Southwestern power group project. We're a proud supporter of the young girls, and they brought such joy to us. We're a small company, but we're sprinkled from coast to coast, and people were watching, and people were rooting them on. I was keeping them emailed so they knew what was going on, and they brought such joy to us, and we are so thankful for that. We understand the work and commitment that it takes from coaches and parents, other family members and friends. We're grateful for that, but most of all, we're so thankful for the young women that impressed all of us. The girls were so resilient and so devoted to their, to their goals, and when I got to be with them a little bit at the little event they had there at Keelit Park, they're just amazing young women, and I know the support that everyone's given them contributes to that. Ditto on what you said, Ann. Thank you. And, thank you.
And it took money to have this, so, you know, your company was a part of that. There were several companies that stepped up and said, you know, we need to help these young people, so.
Thank you.
And I know they're wisdom, because I don't know them, but I'm just saying, we need to recognize that, you know, even though it's a community effort, it takes money. All those things take money. So who's going to come up for the picture?
And if we can before the picture, can we just call for the vote?
Yes.
Motion is.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those, wait, wait. I didn't close, this wasn't a public hearing. Okay, okay, all of you in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Now you have a real, now you have a real, it's official. Nancy Jean, I think they want to do in the picture, too.
I guess, can we just stand up here? And he can be down there. He's pretty tall, so they'll match us.
Very good.
She's tall enough too.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. I don't know softball terms. Is there anything to say cheese? Okay, one, two, three. Thank you. Our strikeout.
Right.
That one game on the record.
But I I noticed that you didn't mention that the world record there.
Yeah, I didn't. We know about the world record though.
Yeah.
She even knows. We didn't mention. It's okay. It's good. She's gonna bring it. We'll bring it and do a big presentation when you get them all together. But I'm gonna quit now. So you have a half the original.
Okay, let's um, move right along. You're also um, up for number fourteen. So if we could have a a motion on number fourteen, please.
Madam Chair, I move we approve Community Enhancement Fund FY twenty five expenditure for this free inter-fund transfer to Development Services to meet the county match for grant award number six nine three J J three two four four zero three seven three from Federal Highway Administration. F H W A can place like variable charging stations around Cochise County in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do you have any further discussion on that, Ms. John?
Um, yes, I I heard about this. Um, I believe in my community, at least there's a huge need. We have a little bit of a partnership with the city to place these. Um, it because we do have that clientele that comes, tourist clientele that comes in and comes to to the wine festivals. And I understand these will be placed downtown where they have easy access to that rather than at the motel. And I feel like that's just who comes to our community and that's meeting a demographic um, need for our travelers. And I'm also kind of anxious to see how solar chargers work in a community, how solar car chargers work. Um, but this is something that is probably better left to Mr. Coxworth to explain. It's his project, but I felt like it would be good to support that effort.
And and I think that it's around the county. So it's they're not just being here in Bisbee. I think we're talking.
Yeah. So there's some in Wilcox, some in Sierra Vista. But I think we are going to have what's sufficient for our needs in our community. And that's what I was focusing on.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I don't have anything against electric cars, but I'll vote against this as it violates free market principles, being a subsidy and therefore an involuntary redistribution of wealth.
Okay. We have your statement on the record. We do have a motion and a second. So I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
We have two to one and it does pass. And so we have approved the enhancement fund expenditure. Item number sixteen.
Fifteen.
Uh, Mr. Gijanto.
Madam Chair, I move we approve transfer of twenty fourteen Chevy Equinox vehicle number three forty four to the Tombstone Marshal's Office.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Could you explain to us, Mr. Gijanto, why they need your old vehicle?
Madam Chair, members of the board, um, thank you. So as everyone should be aware, uh, the Sheriff's Office through grant funding has uh, a detective that's assigned to the Haida Task Force uh, we have for many, many years. Uh, but we only have one. Um, back in twenty twelve, uh, to support that detective's mission, we asked the Haida Task Force to purchase a vehicle uh, for that detective to use. Uh, the task force gave us approximately twenty four thousand to use to purchase the vehicle, which we did in thirteen. And it was a two thousand and fourteen GMC Equinox. Um, earlier this year, uh, we came back to the board and asked you to approve uh, money from the same task force, the Haida Task Force, to buy us a new vehicle to replace the twenty uh, fourteen Equinox, uh, because we needed another one. Um, part of the requirement from Haida is that we take the old car and give it to another member of the task force to use, uh, because we only have one detective. Uh, we can only have one car for that detective as a member of the task force. They gave us the money in the beginning for the vehicle, so they would like us to transfer it um, over to the Tombstone Marshal's Office, who also has a task force member and they need a vehicle. Um, so we are getting a one for one. Uh, the the no money's coming out of the Sheriff's Office um, for the vehicle. Uh, yes, we have maintained it since twenty fourteen. So we did have maintenance costs along the way. Uh, however, um, we we did get funding from a grant uh, to originally purchase the vehicle. Um, and the and Haida's asking us to do that.
Sounds reasonable.
That's a request.
Any questions or comments?
Lieutenant, what vehicle replaced the Equinox or what kind?
Um, I'd rather not say in a public setting because it's going to be used for UC purposes.
I was just wondering if it was bigger.
It is bigger. The the guys are a lot happier. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I don't. Thank you.
We have a a motion and a second. There's no further comments. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous. Thank you, Sean. Uh, next, uh, Mr. Sparza. Development Services, we need a motion to approve an assurance agreement.
Madam Chair, I move we approve an assurance agreement extension to September twelfth, twenty twenty nine for the Highlands at Indy subdivision Pioneer Title Agency Inc. as trustee under trust number seven zero one zero zero two zero six and Indy Motorsport Ranch LLC as beneficiary of trust number seven zero one zero zero two zero six.
I'll second it.
Here we have a motion and a second. Mr. Sparza, you want to go through the information that you gave us?
Yes. So Madam Chair and Board Members, this is a request to extend the assurance agreement agreement for the Highlands at Indy. This is a subdivision. This is one of the few subdivisions that has been approved in the county in the last eight years. But if you're all familiar with Indy Motorsports Ranch out on Airport Road, you know that there's a racetrack and there's members that have trackside garages. So this is east of that along Airport Road. It's about eight miles. And there is a vicinity map. Um, I guess I'll look at that ways. You can see it does lie um, about eight miles west of the city limits of Wilcox on Airport Road. So just a little background information on this. Um, this was a ten-lot minor expedited subdivision when it was approved back in two thousand and seventeen. It's on forty-five acres. Average lot size is three point six acres. It is rule zoned. And the intended uses are for single-family residential development. Here is an aerial view of the subdivision lots. Like I said, there, um, this lies just east of the Indy Motorsports Ranch uh, development there. So uh, these and potentially these could be for members. But again, you know, Mr. Mr. Dorlin is is president. If you have any questions for him, he is the president of Indy Motorsports Ranch. Uh, here's the final plat that was approved and does show there is common area there and there there is a track A, but this is generally the layout. Like I said, these lots average about three point six acres. So the final plan assurance agreement was approved by the board back on September twelfth of twenty seventeen. It's not been previously extended. Um, two lots have been released to date. There was a provision in the original assurance agreement that would allow for the release of up to four lots. However, no building permits or anything could happen with those until the assurance or the improvements had been completed by the developer.
And there are no improvements?
There are. There are no improvements as of yet. So and so eight lots would remain secured under this assurance agreement and um, the request is to extend the assurance agreement for five years to September twelfth of twenty twenty nine. Staff does recommend approval of this extension of the assurance agreement. And I will certainly answer any questions of the board. And as I mentioned, Mr. Dorland is president. If there's any questions.
Any any questions or?
I just would like to say, I'm proud of this too. And had we not had the girls here today with Mr. Dorland here, I would have been like, oh, my gosh, this is a great day. But I had the girls and it overshadowed you and I'm sorry. But um, but I've been able to witness over the years that you know, be previous to being a supervisor, the um, the value that Indy Motorsports has to our community. And this type of a project is while it seems like it's going a little bit slow and they need to get more lots secured under this agreement, you know, to get their full development out, they will. That will happen. And I'm really excited about that. And I actually, I don't know that, Madam Chair, should we invite Mr. Dorland up because he has a lot of enthusiasm and he makes things a lot more fun. So.
I'm sure that he will do the improvements when it's financially feasible.
Yeah.
And so when when we look at the economy, um, the economy, I'm not saying is down, but in his particular field, it isn't the time that he's willing to step out and put a lot more cash out there. So I think it's certainly appropriate for us to look at why do we do these assurance agreements? Is because eventually we want the um, we want the improvements there. And um, I think he understands that. We understand that. Um, and he has done improvements in other areas. But if he doesn't feel like he's got buyers out there that want that land, he's not going to pave the roads and put in the utilities. Any other questions or comments or more?
Mr. Sparza, would you mind uh, regressing to page number five, please? There you go. Okay, so what is the uh, the the piece that looks like a turnaround on the right above where it says Highland Ed? Anyway, it looks like there's the end of the end of a road and a turnaround. What is that?
And and that would be required because you can't have a dead end road, you know, fire emergency personnel would need like a a turnaround.
I understand. For a fire turn. Okay. Which direction is the track from this?
It would be it would be west.
To the west.
It would be west.
About how far?
It's not very far. And I'm guessing probably a mile, half mile.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? No comments?
Nope. Not unless Mr. Dorland wants to talk. I want him to have a chance.
Well, thank you very much. Um, yeah, you know, we uh, put this project on hold. Yeah, you know, and obviously during COVID, the market uh, tumbled and we had to focus on on other things. I do think with five years, um, you know, to to get the marketing in place and to uh, to get buyers interested. Uh, I think that'll really help us. And um, and we're refocusing our marketing efforts. We have done trackside garage ads that are on a ground lease. And um, and those have been pretty popular. And now what we've what we've seen from the from the membership is that they like to have a few simple deeded property. That's been the biggest objection rather than being on a ground lease. Uh, so I think we already do have a pretty good um, you know, contacts uh, and and prospect list that would be ready to go uh, once we really uh, revamp the marketing of these. Uh, and I think, you know, and and obviously it's it's market uh, driven. Um, so you know, I'm I'm hoping in the next two or three years, we can get the the improvements done and uh, and start building uh, the homes on these lots. So.
And and I'm sure you're aware that um, it's it's pretty easy to get the extension the first time around, but the next time it'll be harder.
I I'm pulling around. I hope that's not going to be the case.
And we do too. But in our criteria, that's what I'm saying. We we give you one time and the next time we're going to be tough like.
Yeah.
But thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
And investing in Cochise County.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anything else before I call for the vote?
Nope.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. Uh, now we look to uh, Dan Duchon, he hasn't been here in a while, so he's got three on today. Let's let's start with the first one, which is the Department of Forestry and Environment. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management Cooperative Agreement for reimbursement of county resources used for incident support effective for a period of ten years from the date of final signature.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Dan, you want to give us a short explanation on that?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having me. Uh, this agreement with state forestry, uh, the Department of Fire and Forestry Management, it's a cooperative agreement. Uh, as we know, the state forestry in Cochise County have a duty to respond to fire and non-fire emergencies across the county. This cooperative agreement sets out the framework for logistics support, such as resource ordering through the state Emergency Operations Center. Use and reimbursement expectations of county equipment is used on an incident or county staff are utilized. Uh, and that would follow predetermined FEMA or standard fire rates. Or if we request the use of DFFM equipment on county property, if that would be necessary. Uh, it establishes single points of contact uh, or a single point of contact for county departments, that being the county emergency manager, uh, emergency management department. Uh, and we establish reimbursement expectations for large declared emergencies with DFFM, uh, that being the fire management assistant grants. We call the FMAG fires, the very large ones we think of. And it further establishes the framework if the county and DFFM wish to engage in joint projects. Uh, most importantly, any obligation to DFFM or the county is based on the availability of funds. And there's no liability if we or they are unable to provide any resource. The agreement is effective for ten years. That could be canceled with thirty days' notice. And we did, uh, the county did adopt a similar agreement in the end of twenty twenty two. However, DFFM desired to extend it to ten years and also get all of their partners and counties on the same timeframe. So they asked for us to bring it back this year.
Sounds certainly reasonable to have all of these things laid out ahead of time. So there's no bickering later after the fact, because you don't know when the fire is coming or the flood or whatever you've responded to. Any questions or comments from the board members?
No.
No.
Well, we have a motion and a second. So I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair vote aye and unanimous and approved. Uh, the next one, could we have a motion on who's going to represent us officially?
Madam Chair, I move we approve the designation of Daniel S. Duchon as the applicant's authorized representative to the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, which designates designates the county representative for applying for certain public assistance and hazard mitigation assistance and authorize the applicant's authorized representative to execute and deliver said applications on behalf of Cochise County.
I second it.
Maybe I have a motion and a second. Uh, it's pretty self-explanatory, but before he explains it, I I also want to say thank you for stepping up, you know, especially with the transportation of the migrants. Mr. Duchon has been a primary source of trying to keep the 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 wheels on the road, so to speak, and and keep the public from feeling like that people were dumped here and and helping them to feel like they they had a a place to go. So I just want to thank you for that. And and it was because he's head of that that he took the initiative and and went out to to make sure that we were not only equal partners, but we were, you know, partners of of value, you know, to that process. So thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Did you want to add anything else that we we know that we have to have someone designated? You know, for our bank accounts, we have to have someone designated as our representative for uh, emergency and military affairs. I don't know.
A couple of quick words. Uh, this is specifically for the public assistance grant, uh, which allows partial reimbursement of expenses we incurred during a declared emergency.
Right.
Uh, and that's why it's good to be proactive and have this authorized applicant representative ready to go in advance.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
No.
Hearing none, then we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. And it looks like you have someone else working with you. So what?
How do you say Albert's last name?
Ashafi.
Ashafi. Okay. I'm ready to make a motion.
All right.
Madam Chair, I move I approve the designation of Albert Ashafi. Madam Chair, I move, I approve the designation of Albert Achave as the alternate applicant's authorized representative to the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, which designates the county representative for applying for certain public assistance and authorizes the alternate applicant's authorized representative to execute and deliver said application on behalf of Cochise County.
Second.
We have a motion for you to sit. A further.
This is exactly the same uh, process. However, I think it'd be valuable to have an alternate.
Right. In case you're busy somewhere.
Yes.
Any other comments before I call for the vote?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair vote, aye and unanimous and approved. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Uh, state and federal legislation, it looks like they've all gone home. Nobody's at the feds, nobody's at the state.
I have a tiny comment. Um, today, the Eastern Counties Organization, which is a subsidiary of Arizona Association, it's actually um, approved through the state and funded by the state. Um, the Eastern Counties Organization consists of six eastern counties. Um, they're meeting today for their annual policy meeting. And I just wanted to bring that up in this portion, um, just to make you aware that we are starting to work on policy for next year. Um, anything that affects forests, um, public safety fires, things like that. If there, if the two of you could think of anything that would be beneficial to have the six eastern counties working on it with our organization, we would be happy to assist you. And you can't contact me directly, but if you tell Mr. Kawachka, anytime you think of something, he can tell me, right? Can you? Or is that breaking public? How about you go directly to E- Eastern Counties Organization? I just want to make you aware. I don't know how to do that.
So if there is, if there, if either one of the board members has any uh, ideas, uh, please present them to me. And then I'll I'll filter them correctly.
Correctly to Mr. Burleye.
Yep.
Okay.
Or we can have a work session to see if we want to.
Right.
Correct.
Right, let's do that. But I just want to make you aware, we're getting started. Yeah, we're getting started on our policy and it seems like we mostly do our work with forest and fire management. And I I know we have a little bit of that here, but they're also interested in some of our issues like water and anything, anything that we need help with, they will lobby and work with us. So.
All right. Um, Mr. Kawachka, any recent impending county matters you want to tell the public of, and as a matter?
I'm going to pass on this, this one to us for today, because we have several meetings in the afternoon. So.
Okay. Um, current events, Mr. Crawford.
I'll pass.
Okay. Um, the current events, I think for the um, uh, benefit of the staff, I should say that I think you should all be um, proud of the emergency services that exist here in southeast Arizona, because I had to take advantage of their flying service and their emergency medical. And I'm totally happy with what happens in our emergency rooms and wanted you to realize that we should all be thankful for the services that we do have and the services that we have to get us other places when necessary. Um, Ms. Judd, I'm I'm mentioning it here because it was a current event last week. So you have any current events?
I've addressed my current event already today. Thank you.
All right, next meeting then today is at one o'clock in the Board of Supervisors hearing room. And it's a work session regarding the Public Works informational update. Having said that, I don't believe there's anything else. So meeting adjourned. Thank you.